The call is regular monthly meeting order, Tuesday, August the 25th, 2015. We'll start with the prayer superintendent of Oche and I'll lead in the pledge, Mr. Egan.
Dear Heavenly Father, we come to you this evening mindful of the way in which you have blessed our school district over the past 10 years. As we reflect on our parish's devastation at the hands of Katrina, we are grateful for your grace and mighty hand in our rebuilding for this community. We are thankful for those pioneer teachers and administrators and board members who were part of our early efforts, and we are grateful for the opportunity to serve children throughout the rebirth of this community. We know that through you, all of these things are possible, and we thank you, Father, for helping us as we helped our friends and neighbors return to St. Bernard. We pray this prayer of gratitude in your name.
Amen. The flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Superintendent Oche, would you call the roll?
Mrs. Acevedo is not with us, Mr. Campbell.
Here.
Mr. Egan.
Here.
Mr. England.
Here.
Mrs. Lemoine.
Here.
Mrs. Daisar.
Here.
Dr. Craft.
Here.
Dr. Lewis.
Here.
Mr. Long.
Here.
And Miss Acevedo. Okay. And Zach, do we have anyone for the community concerns signed up?
I think so.
While you're checking on that, I'll do a point of personal privilege. We have someone that had a birthday, August the 16th, Dr. Lewis. Happy belated birthday.
Happy birthday.
Any others that have any points of personal privilege? All right, if not, we'll continue with the agenda. Item five is a motion to incorporate the report of the general committee meeting into the minutes of the August regular monthly meeting. Move by Mr. Campbell, second by Mr. Warner. Okay, hearing and seeing no hands and hearing no voices, vote your machines.
Motion passes nine zero.
Agenda item six, first, minutes of the special meeting, June the night, 2015, is published on July the 31st, 2015. Do we have a motion? Motion by Mr. England, second by Ms. Dyson. Questions, any comments? Vote your machines.
Motion passes nine zero.
The minutes of the regular monthly meeting of June the 23rd, 2015, is published on July the 31st, 2015. Motion by Ms. Lemoine, second by Ms. Dyson. Any questions, any comments? Hearing none, vote your machines.
Motion passes nine zero.
The third item on, agenda item six, minutes of the special meeting of July the 7th, 2015, is published on July the 31st, 2015. Dr. Lewis moves, and we have a second by Mr. Warner. Any questions? Statements? Vote your machines.
Motion passes nine zero.
Okay, Mr. Granberry, you're on for agenda items seven on personnel changes for this month.
The changes from last meeting are highlighted in the other.
You have item seven in your packet of materials? You may peruse that. Any questions of Mr. Granberry?
I have a question.
Yes, go ahead, Ms. Dyson.
Good evening, Mr. Granberry. I just have a question on the new appointments. Is it because of the numbers that have grown or in the classrooms, or is that because of the fact that they just were not filled in the beginning?
Let's see, two of them were resignations, late resignations that we had, and the other ones were positions we just hadn't filled yet that we now have filled.
Okay. So it's not as a result of...
Nothing has been done because of numbers, yes.
Okay, thank you very much. How are we on classroom...
We have one more, one more position that we need to fill at Andrew Jackson Middle School, special education position, and possibly a counselor position that we are looking at at Smith.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Granberry.
Anyone else? Okay, we thank you, Mr. Granberry. Item eight on the agenda, update to test security policy, and there's no recommendation for the, from the committee because it's being presented tonight. Ms. Lametta?
Yes, sir. Good evening. Just in time to time, as the state puts additions to their test security policy, we make sure we add those into our local policy. So what I've given you is a handout, which is our local policy, and I've highlighted just a few places where we've added things that are new, and I'll just take a second to briefly go through those pages with you and just explain what's new. So the first thing is on the bottom of page one, they've just asked us in the policy to actually list out who has access at the district and school level to the secure place where test materials are stored, and I've listed that out on page one. That's all that is. Page two, number seven, we just added Park in to the different forms of the test that students now take, that you can't administer any parallel forms of the test prior to testing. And then page three at the top, Bessie put in some verbiage to, I guess, explain a little more thoroughly what would happen if any teacher or leader violates test security or is caught cheating. The top of page three explains exactly what, you know, what they feel like should happen. The bottom of page...
To license or revoke?
Yes, exactly. Yes, they would revoke or suspend the license. Bottom of page three, for Park, which is different from LEAP and ILEAP, if you're a teacher who will be administering the accommodation of tests read aloud to a student, the teachers are given two days prior to the test to come to a secure location. They cannot bring anything to write, take notes, but they are allowed to read over the test in the event that they have a question on how to read it to a student. They can then ask the district test coordinator for clarification on how they should read that, just to make sure the students get the best possible testing experience. So that is something that Park has added in that we do not have for LEAP or ILEAP or the other tests, so that's added in.
Is that a one-on-one right there with the teaching of student, or do they have a third person answer?
The teachers, just to be clear, the teachers come in after two days ahead with the test coordinator, and they sit in a secure place, the teachers get to view it, make sure there's no confusion about what they have to read, get any questions they have answered, and then they leave and come back, just so that they're sure they know what they're doing when they come to read the test to the students, in case they have any clarifying questions on how to read something.
Right.
That's what that's for. If the student's not involved.
Because the students have an accommodation through their special education IP that they have a test read aloud in a certain portion of it.
Okay, and then at the top of page four, the second two bulleted items, just in the interest of test security, that we will assign time, the test coordinators can come ahead of time and do any hand coding or any bubbling they have to do prior to testing at our district location, and then we will hold on to all the test items till about three working days before the test, and then we'll release those out to the schools and they'll box those up and get those ready for the students, and we'll do that as best we can with time constraints that we have. Okay, and then page six. Page six at the bottom, we have had a district policy that Ms. Harlton and I and Ms. Kirk, we go out to the schools and we monitor test procedures, we monitor materials being given out, picked up, and teachers actually giving the test, to be sure that we're following all the state procedures. We just never did list it in our policy, so that's just us listing in there that we actually do that throughout the testing session. And then page seven, we have had this policy in place, I guess, practice in place for a long time. If there's any teacher who feels like students are erasing excessively, we have a form they fill out and just report that they did notice a student was erasing quite a bit in a session. They report that to us and I send that into the state, so we just went ahead and included that in our policy. And then finally, page 14, the state has added this to their policy, that to the best extent practicable, to assign another test administrator to give the test to a class other than the teacher appropriate as best we can in scheduling. So that's on the last page, and these are just things that the state had added or asked districts to clarify in their policy. So this now puts us in line with the state test security policy.
Dr. Craft?
Yes, Ms. Dyson?
I would move that we accept the district test security policy.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
A second. Now, Mr. Long, any questions of Ms. Lametta at this point? Hearing none, we have a motion, a second on the floor, vote your machines.
Motion passes nine zero.
Thank you very much, Ms. Lametta, for your work. Agenda item nine, bid tabulation on the Shawmet High accessory building, and there was no recommendation coming from the committee.
Good evening.
Mr. Carey, how you doing?
If you remember, months ago, we bid the same project and we only had one bidder, so we didn't accept it, and we put it out to bid again, and today we had four bidders, Gibbs being the low bidder at 676,300. The original bid was 775,000, so we're 100,000 under that bid.
That's good.
So it was worth waiting for.
Anyone have questions? Mr. Carey, Mr. Long, and then...
Mr. Carey, who was the only bidder last time?
It was...
Wasso.
Yeah, Wasso, I'm sorry, Wasso.
Okay. So they didn't...
And they didn't rebid it, no.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, Ms. Dyson?
It's great that we saved $100,000 by way of rebidding it.
Yeah, and then I had a letter from Gibbs today acknowledging that their bid is a good bid, and Keen Newbray wrote me a letter saying they recommended it, so.
Okay, well, I would make a motion that we accept the lowest bid, which is Gibbs Construction.
Second by Dr. Lewis, before we go to that motion, you had had a question.
No, no.
That's what you wanted to do, okay. Thank you, Mr. Campbell. Okay, hearing no one else, I'll vote your machines.
Motion passes nine zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Carey. Item 10, on the agenda, motion to approve the pupil progression plan for 2015, 2016, and there was a recommendation by the committee. Ms. Harlton?
Hi.
Do we have a motion on the floor? Do we have a second? Okay, we have a second, Ms. Lemoine, go ahead with any statement you have.
I just had one little statement. I wanted to reiterate what the few changes were, that the fourth and eighth grade, we'd have the option, the local option, not to use the test as the primary reason for promotion, we could use other factors too. And at the elementary school, we had two little changes. One is not on here, that's the one I wanted to go over with you for just a second. We were gonna, the kids were gonna receive one grade for reading slash language arts because it's all connected.
Okay.
And we met with Mr. Kassar and the principals last week, and like other parishes do for art, music, and PE at the elementary level, the kids are gonna get grades S's and U's, S's needs improvement or U's instead of As, Bs, and Cs, just in cultural arts, because they only go one day a week to art, one day a week to music, so it's really difficult to assess that as a letter grade, but we thought that S's and U's would be more effective.
That'd be appropriate.
So everybody agreed to that, okay?
Okay, now, on the reading, the English, you'll have two grades separated by a slat, or will they be averaged down?
No, it's gonna be one grade, because what we do is we're grading the reading comprehension, the writing, it's all related, like you're reading a passage and writing about that passage, so it's very difficult to split the grades into a reading grade and a language grade.
Okay, so they'll get one grade for those.
Yes, and that's how the middle schools do it also, so it's very consistent with how they do it.
Okay, sounds good.
Okay, that's it.
Any other questions? Hearing none, I believe we have a motion on the floor in a second. Vote your machines.
Motion passes nine zero.
Thank you.
Item 11, a student data privacy policy, and there was a recommendation by the committee. Mr. Brown?
I'll make a motion.
We have a motion by Dr. Lewis, second by Mr. Warner. Any questions of Mr. Brown, since he's conveniently located?
Went through an extensive...
He did a great job last time explaining this, and we appreciate such a thorough explanation, Mr. Brown. Thank you very much. We have a motion on the floor in a second. Vote your machines.
Motion passes nine zero.
All righty, thank you, Mr. Brown. Item 12, on the agenda, motion to approve the Louisiana compliance questionnaire, there was a recommendation by the committee. We have a motion by Mr. Long, second by Mr. Campbell. Any questions relative to this? Hearing none, vote your machines.
Motion passes nine zero.
Item 13, we need a motion to go into executive session. Mr. Warner, second, Ms. Dyson, so all in favor of going into the executive session, say aye. Any opposed, nay? So we are in executive session, well...
Mentioned for the reason.
And the reason is to discuss the employee contract, which we're going to put to bed to finalize this. Okay, while we're waiting for the room to be cleared, are we going to stay here or we all go to the executive?
Yeah, we'll stay here.
We'll stay here. This is ready, is it?
I'll move that we go into open session.
Okay, a motion to move we go into open session, second by Mr. Egan. Okay, we are all in favor, say aye. Okay, any opposed? So we open the session at this point. Ms. Dyson, I believe you have a motion to make.
Thank you, Dr. Craft. At this time, I would like to make a motion that we accept our new contract negotiation contract with our employees for a four-year term, and to just state that in order to maximize and to use our present revenues and funding and as stewards of public monies and because the school system has been very fiscally conservative, included in this contract will be a raise for all employees because of the revenues that have been increased because of student population, and again, because of our fiscal conservatism and being good stewards of the public monies, and I would like to place that in a form of a motion.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Dyson, a second, Mr. England?
And also, I'm sorry, I wanted to also say that, you know, this increase is very well deserved of all of our employees. The last time we were able to give any increase has been, was four years ago, and we are so blessed to have all of our employees who were very dedicated and worked so hard for us, and also, I would like to thank our administration for working so diligently and hard on the contract with our employees and doing an excellent job, so we do appreciate everything that the administration has done. And again, we are very, very happy that included in this contract negotiation, we have provided a raise for all employees, and it's very, very well deserved, and I know every board member feels the same way.
Right.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Dyson, and it's a privilege to be able to do this financially because of the fiscal situation. It's a very appropriate raise of $2,500 for each employee, and that's for the teachers and the other employees, based on their rank and years of experience, they will receive the raise also, and I know the board has been proud of all the work that is going on by the administrators, the teachers, and the results of the students' achievement has been just outstanding, so that's why we're known around this state as a premier school district, and that makes us feel good, and it's a great team, Team St. Bernard District of Public Education, and public education has made such a difference, not only in this region, but around the nation, and we must always be advocates for public education and stand strong for it, because there are other people that do not feel the same way, and that's their problem. Okay? So, thank you, Superintendent Oche, for leading the charge, and I think I've been educating around this going back to the 60s, and I think this is the best pay package that we have seen from a local school district of St. Bernard Parish, so thank you for your leadership. Yeah, okay.
And I would be remiss, and I would like to say something and thank the school board members who are sitting around this table, because over the past 10 years, we have been engaged in rebuilding the school system, and the hundreds of millions of dollars that have gone through our school system, and those are federal dollars from FEMA and the CDDG Community Development Funds, and the insurance proceeds that could only be directed toward building new facilities. We've done an unbelievable job with that, but over the course of this 10-year period, you know, the school board has directed us as administrators to make sure that we have been able to attract the best employees possible for the, you know, the betterment of the education of our students, and it's extremely important when we entered into negotiations, and I just want to applaud each and every one of you at the direction that you gave us in terms of making sure that we maximized what we could give to our employees using the existing funds that we have on a local basis, and taking that increase in the MFP and state funding, and trying to make sure that we were maximizing what we could give to each of our teachers and our employees. So I want to thank all of you for making sure that our employees were right up there with our students. As we look toward increased educational achievement for our students, we know that the employees that we have have to be quality employees, and we have to compensate them commensurate with what they should be receiving. So thank you for recognizing that fact and directing this package that we have been able to present to them from a fiscal standpoint. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Oche. Any other board members have any statements before we vote? Okay, we will have a roll call vote. Would you call the roll to, for the vote of ratification of the contract?
Okay, Mr. Campbell.
Four.
Mr. Egan.
Four.
Mr. England.
Four.
Mrs. Lemoine.
Four.
Mrs. Daisar.
Four.
Dr. Craft.
Four.
Dr. Lewis.
Four.
Mr. Long.
Four.
Mr. Warner.
Four.
It was a unanimous ratification.
Very good. Okay, we'll get back to the board agenda. Item 14, items to be placed on the agenda for the next committee meeting in September. You have time to do that, but if you have something on your mind now, you want to address it to the superintendent, we will, but Ms. Dyson?
Dr. Craft, I would just like an update on the employee, on the numbers of students.
Enrollment?
Enrollment numbers.
Okay.
Up till the next meeting.
Okay, and I think that we, well, go ahead and finish that one.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, Dr. Lewis, you're at the floor.
Yes, thank you, Dr. Craft. I'd like to just take this opportunity as we approach the anniversary of Katrina. I know on Friday we'll have our reflection breakfast, but I'd like to just take this time to thank Ms. Oche for her leadership, also to thank the board members who are seated here today. I know as an employee that came back in November, when you all came together after losing everything that you personally had to bring the school system back, and we didn't know exactly what was going to happen, you know, Ms. Oche did say that when the first child would return, that we will provide educational services, but look where we are today, you know, almost back to our pre-Katrina numbers, and look at our school system, our buildings, they're way better than we ever had before, and so it's a great, even though we've gone through a lot, for our students, they have gained a lot, and so I truly want to thank the leadership of Ms. Oche for doing the impossible to get us to where we are today. We sincerely appreciate you and the administration for everything that has been done over the last 10 years to get us to where we are today, and we just say thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Lewis. I remember back then in August of 2005, most of you might not remember, but I was a board member, and a lot of people told me, school board president, I mean, I was a board member, but I was your president elected by the board, and I remember numerous people saying, you'll never get it up, it'll take a year or two years before you get it. I said, my answer to that, you watch over smoke. They didn't realize we had Doris Oche on our side, and I, and, right, and I tell you, she had just been a superintendent for one year, say, she didn't need training wheels on her track, she was off and running. I said, go for it, because you're the one, if it's to be done, you've got to do it, and she did it, and we've come a long way, baby, and we're so, we're so pleased with the progress of the St. Bernard Parish School District, and Team St. Bernard School District made it possible, everybody working together. We weren't groping for a microphone to get on the news or anything that, but the board and all the administrators and teachers coming in, they were working behind the scenes quietly, but progressively, every day, to make it happen, and it happened, and we're so pleased, we're so pleased with it. So thank, thank you all very much. Okay, superintendent's recommendation.
Ms. Oche, moments, can you give us an update of at the next committee meeting about when we're gonna have the grand opening for that?
Yeah.
Because I know it's almost, the punch-out list is being punched right now.
As we know, we were thinking of doing that on the Saturday night, the 10th anniversary, but the parish had planned a big celebration, so we are moving ours back because of that, and we have some ideas of a great opening date, and maybe we can discuss it at the next meeting.
That'd be great.
Which would be great.
Maybe the board can go to the planetarium for a preliminary meeting there, would be good.
That would be wonderful, yes.
To see how it, how it works and all, I'm anxious to see, see the stars.
We see stars every day.
And examine the universe. Sometimes Carolyn tells me I'm gonna see that if I go there. Okay.
Okay. All right, and I just wanted to mention, of course, as Dr. Lewis did, that the, our Day of Reflection Breakfast, the 10th anniversary, we're gonna hold, host it this Friday morning. We are sold out, we've had a great deal of interest in it, we'll have close to 700 people. They are Friday morning, between 6:50 and 700, depending on how many tables we can squeeze in at that point. It's gonna be a wonderful event, highlighting our students as usual, and it's a great community event, and contrary to what I've been hearing rumors around the parish, they want to know, is this our last one, or is this your last breakfast? And we said absolutely not.
Oh, right.
We have always called it our Day of Reflection Breakfast, and we intend to continue to have that, to highlight our students and our programs, and bring the community together around a wonderful event each and every year, so we can, we expect to continue that annually. Today was the first day for our pre-K students, so we had half of them arriving this morning, and then we'll have the other half as well, so pretty soon we're going to reach those enrollment numbers that we'll report to you at the next meeting, and we're constantly increasing enrollment. I think when, when you look at the percentage of students that are in the school system now compared to what we had prior to the storm, we have a greater percentage of students than the percentage of population returned in the parish, which tells us that we're we're hoping to continue to attract young families who can come and, and purchase homes for a much more reasonable price and, um, avail themselves of the educational and educational opportunities here, as well as recreational and in a very safe environment that our law enforcement community has provided for us here in St. Bernard. So with that, we're hoping to see many, many of our students returning as they have now.
Right, as they grow up.
As they grow up, and believe in...
Settle here in St. Bernard, no reason to go anywhere else. All right, uh, having said that, do we have a motion adjourned? Motion by Mr. Campbell?
Sure.
Do we have a second? Mr. Egan, thank you, thank you very much. All in favor of adjournings, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. We stand adjourned. Y'all have a good night. Thank you for coming.